For the committee of the whole meeting and we are going to begin with a presentation of the English High Junior ROTC Program.
So, I just want to share some of what was shared with me by Sergeant Major Beto. So Lynn English swept the competition. Winning first place in all eight drill categories. Diana Cuevas commanded the inspection team and color guard. She received medals for being the best commander for those two events. Lynn English is one of two schools in First Region that were invited to compete in the national level in Virginia this April. I'm so proud. I think we all know that the ROTC program is an amazing program in Lynn. I feel like a proud mama right now because Diana Cuevas and Ms. O'Neal, Sheila O'Neal, knows this because she was at Harrington when Diana was there. She was one of my students, always was a good student. But I am so proud, we all are just so proud of what you accomplish year after year after year. And I look so forward to hearing in April how you do. Congratulations.
So the Lynn School Committee has this certificate, maybe I can read this so we can gather and take a picture, that hereby extends with great pride and appreciation its most sincere congratulations to Lynn English High School Marine Corps Junior ROTC Program. In recognition of placing first in all eight drill categories at the Northeast Regional Drill Competition, February 2023, we on the school committee are honored to recognize your outstanding accomplishments and respectfully offer our warmest encouragement and best wishes for continued success in your endeavors. Congratulations.
Committee members, just so you know, I did share with you some of the pictures from that day, just so that you can see how excited they were.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Still going after it. Congratulations again to the English Junior ROTC Program and best of luck. We are so proud of you. We also have the honor of recognizing Barry McCall.
And so can we have Barry come forward. Again, we are so proud. Mr. Barry McCall, who's our LVTI Department Head, has been named the 2022 National Safety Educator of the Year by Career Safe. As the winning educator, he will be awarded $5,000 for his classroom and an all-expense-paid trip to the ACTE Career Technical Vision Conference at the end of the year. We are so proud. Barry, how many years have you been in the Lynn Public Schools?
This is 25.
25 years, all at Tech. I don't think there's anyone at Tech that doesn't know your work and know the commitment and dedication that you have put at Lynn Tech and that you put for our students. And safety is always your priority, I know that from watching you. We are very proud of you and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And we have another certificate from the committee that we would love to present to you, and so we'll go up in a minute and just say that we are so, always so proud to have our own Voc Tech School and District and to have someone that's a national leader on such an important issue as safety is just an immense honor for the city of Lynn and for the Lynn Public Schools. Congratulations.
Fred Gallo, you should come in too.
Donnie, you gotta give my good time, brother, 25 years.
I've had the pleasure of working with Barry for 25 years. Excellent, thank you.
Buildings and Grounds is next. And that concludes the committee at home.
I'd like to bring the Building and Grounds Subcommittee to order. Roll call, please.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
So, Mr. Regero, do you want to superintendent introduce?
Yes, so what we have is a proposal that we want to share with you. Kim Powers will be presenting the PowerPoint with the help of Ludia Modi. Do you want to come to the guest table to share a possible proposal to consider? So, I'm going to turn it over to them.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for allowing me to be in this space with you all. Thank you. Again, I apologize for the PowerPoint in the background with all the pictures. Should have unplugged the HDMIC cord, so apologies there. But so excited to be here. My name's Ludia. I am the Food Projects North Shore Regional Director, so really excited to kind of bring this to you all. For folks who may not be familiar with the Food Projects, I thought we could start off by just kind of sharing a little bit about what the mission of the organization is and what this proposal is looking to do, and then we'll kind of get into the nitty-gritty of what exactly it entails. So, the Food Projects' mission is to create a thoughtful and productive community of youth and adults from diverse backgrounds who work together to build sustainable food system. At the organization, you know, our core focus is that we believe that food is a right and a sign of privilege. And also recognizing food access in itself is a complicated issue, right? So, a lot of different complexities show up, one in terms of like systems of injustices, in terms of locationality, where food is placed, in terms of food hubs, recognizing lower-income urban communities have a concentration of fast-food restaurants, things that, you know, address emergency relief, hunger in that moment, but it's not sustainable long-term. So, really thinking about what that looks like and to address that is, requires a multifaceted approach. And a lot of that approach needs to be community-driven as well. So, that's why we want to create a proposal to bring a greenhouse at Callahan Elementary School. And this greenhouse will do a variety of different things, specifically two things. So, we want to create a greenhouse that will, one, create an opportunity for students to experience experiential learning, so thinking about STEM curriculum, how do you bring hands-on learning to fruition for students to be able to take on to that, learn about STEM agriculture, and also think a lot about, you know, how do we tie in social-emotional learning for students, creating outdoor environments for them to do that. That's one aspect of it. The other aspect of the greenhouse will have the opportunity to address food insecurity. In the city of Lynn, food insecurity is on the rise. There's a pandemic showed us that in particular. So, what we want to do is create a two-birds-one-stone type of deal, right? When we're thinking about communities, the residents that live in that area and also all of the students' families and loved ones, like those are all part of our Lynn community and they, some of them potentially suffer from food insecurity. So, let's think about how we create a year-round growing space where folks are able to grow food that is able to sustain themselves and are able to do that consistently. So, thinking about beyond emergency food relief, how do you create long-term longevity for folks? And also tying into students as well, right? So, this model in itself is not a new model. There are so many proven models that have existed in Massachusetts, so we'll look at three in particular that are within the North Shore area. So, one model is Gus Greenhouse in Beverly, so specifically Glenn Earhart School. So, Glenn Earhart School is an independent progressive day school, pre-K to 8, in Beverly, Massachusetts, and they have an outdoor greenhouse that's attached to their school premises. So, what the greenhouse does is creating an opportunity for their students to learn more about traditional, non-traditional ways of learning, so getting outside, learning how to grow food, also be exposed to outdoor elements as that enhances cognitive development, right? And then, part of that greenhouse is also utilized as growing space as well. So, if the greenhouse itself is 7,000 square feet, half of them is used as a classroom space, the other half is used to grow seedlings that is therefore planted on the school property. So, a lot of flowers are grown in that greenhouse, so getting students the opportunity to come and be able to grow things with their hands and be able to kind of get outside of the traditional classroom model. So, that's one model. The other one is Essex North Agricultural Technical School. And Essex Ag is specifically an agricultural and technical program trade school located in Danvers. They have specific science and horticulture programming in addition to a variety of other programming that they provide for their students. But that's another opportunity for students to kind of think about what it means to practice horticulture, practice sustainable agriculture, and then also learn about, you know, botanical garden spaces as well. So, in that curriculum in itself, a lot of their students are learning entrepreneurship, growing food, and then using that to sell as well, so doing a lot of plant sales, vegetable sales. So, it's kind of like a holistic approach when you're thinking about this. And Essex and Tech, Essex Ag itself, their greenhouse is roughly around 8,000 square feet. So, it's kind of similar to what we're looking at as well for Callahan. Another model I just want to kind of bring up a little bit is around the Food Projects. So, the Food Projects does have a Dudley Greenhouse in Roxbury, Massachusetts. That greenhouse is owned by DSNI. DSNI is Dudley Street Neighborhood Initiative, and they're a nonprofit organization that's community-driven, and they're essentially thinking about green spaces to enhance residents' experiences. The Food Projects has taken over that green space in that land for about 12 years, and we're actually using it as a year-round growing space for residents in that area. So, folks are coming to grow food, learn about educational programming when it comes to food accessibility, and a lot of that programming is also bringing together students as well. So, students that are around the Dorchester, Boston Public Schools attend that to learn. So, these three models, it's really important to kind of think about. The greenhouse itself at Dudley is 10,000 square feet, if you're thinking about proximity, and it's, we're hosting about 36 community workshops in that space. Some pictures of us doing that. So, the proposal in front of you, what we want to do, essentially we want to partner with Lynn Public Schools to create 8,000-square-foot greenhouse at Callahan Elementary School that will be utilized by students that breed Callahan and Classical. So, we're thinking about three schools within a one-mile radius, having one centralized location where they can think about experiential learning and social-emotional learning in its entirety. And then, half of that greenhouse will be utilized specifically in those three schools, and the other half of the greenhouse will be working towards addressing food insecurity. So, 2,000 square feet will be used for year-round growing spaces, and the other 2,000 square foot is going to be used for community workshops, educational purposes that students can also be a part of as well, but it's mainly directed for residents to learn more about how to sustain themselves as they're growing their food. And then, that would also be a space to think about seedlings, so cultural relevant produce for folks, they can bring seeds from home that we can be able to start for them in the greenhouse as well. So, in entirety, it'll be 8,000 square feet, separated in half with two separate entries. The location of the greenhouse, of course, these are preliminary in terms of location, there's adjustments that can definitely be made, but we're looking for it to be kind of tucked away towards the back in that open green area that's near the residential housing area that's there. In terms of just kind of breaking down the operations and management of the greenhouse, what we're proposing is that the greenhouse would manage the construction of the greenhouse, so we'll be sourcing funding to be able to build the greenhouse, and we'll also manage all of the needs that it's needed for it to be operating. So, tackle on all the utilities, really take on the operations and the management of the greenhouse in itself, and that's for all 8,000 square feet. And we'll be building raised beds as needed based on what the schools would like to utilize the greenhouse space for. So, being a thought partner and a collaborator in that space. The ask is that we would love for Lynn Public Schools, specifically like the Assistant Director of Science, Leah, to, you know, support the operations and utilization of the greenhouse, so working strategically with admin staff that is in those schools to think about how these three schools can work together to be able to use the space, so having an anchor person there, and then also just collaboratively working with all the faculty and staff there, dreaming up what this space could look like and how Food Projects can be an assistance to support that and make that dream come to fruition. Initially, in terms of this putting this proposal together, we did have a meeting with James, the principal at Callahan, and we did an initial survey of the teachers and faculty there around, you know, the support of the greenhouse, is this something that folks are interested in, should we invest in this, what does this look like? And we got an overwhelmingly positive response from the survey that was taken. I just put in a few quotes in here to share some of that with you all. So, this is one of the quotes that was listed in there, so I'm going to take a second to read that. So, kind of thinking about cafeteria staff, thinking about food and growing, and putting that into, onto plates for students, so thinking about the process in its entirety. Another quote here, still kind of thinking about the long history TFP has and wanting to bring that in with Lynn Public Schools and wanting to bring that to Callahan, and the benefits of eating good food and kids learning, children learning about that. And then also, kind of, this is another quote here from someone who has worked at Ingles. And then, your third quote. Wonderful. And those are the supports that we have here. So, thank you so much for taking the time to listen to the proposal and I'll pass it to Kim.
And I also want to speak to, I began my relationship with the Food Project in 2008 as the principal of the Ingles School. An amazing partnership and what the Food Project provided us with in terms of the land and what it meant to our community. They're a wonderful partner. They're partnering now also with LVTI. They just have continued to be an incredible partner. And when Ludia approached me about this idea, we went to the Callahan School, we met with Principal Kennison, overwhelming support from him in support of this project, but in terms of it serving three school communities for experiential, for ex-
Experiential.
Experiential learning and hands-on science projects, I mean, it just could provide our students with amazing opportunities, but it will also provide that community with an amazing opportunity. So, I just wanted to voice my support. Ludia and the Food Project has just been an amazing partner within LPS.
Thank you. That concludes it.
Mr. Cassie Alanos.
First of all, I want to say thank you for today's presentation, and I do remember the Salad Bowl program that Deputy Powers talked about at Ingles, and I know it's powerful to address food insecurity in the city. I grew up, you know, on microwaveable foods, canned foods, and really never really got the opportunity to have that healthy diet, to learn about healthy eating until I got to college. It was important for me to recognize food insecurity as I grew older, to make life adjustments. It's important to educate our, you know, our kids on making better choices and to learn that process, but there is inequities in food that are relevant in the city. I really appreciate the thoughtfulness in your proposal and really gathering a solid, a solid plan. This is not, you guys put a lot of effort into putting this together. I have a question around the building and maintenance costs of the actual greenhouse and how that, how would that would really look like, just to kind of, if you could just dive deeper into elaborating what that looks like for us?
Yeah, of course. So, as of right now, you know, it is all still very new, so we're definitely looking to collaborate and kind of think about what works, but because we would love to kind of front a lot of the costs in terms of building the greenhouse, sourcing funding to do that, and really figure out, you know, management of it, ideally, we want to think about it living with the Food Project in terms of just like utilities and handling all of those constructional pieces, so that way you all, the school community, doesn't have to take any of those pieces on, because I do recognize it does hold a lot of weight. So, because we have experience managing a greenhouse in Roxbury, which is 10,000 square feet, is very similar, so we know and have people who are expertise in running and operating greenhouses, so it would just be a matter of them supporting us and continuing that here.
Yeah, well, I also, I think about where that location is, to how to tap into the landline. I know ISD or whoever, we would have to partner up with the city to kind of make that come to light. I think there are some probable costs that would need to be addressed. So, today's proposal would be to move forward, to explore the partnership in this proposal, or would it be, could we have some clarification on exactly what this would look like?
Yeah, tonight is about to present to you the idea. And certainly, there's more discussions that need to happen with Mike Donovan and ISD and determine, you know, is this feasible? Is the area that they're looking at feasible? Is there any additional costs that might prevent us from being able to do this? And then, I think after that happens, then it would come back to the table for approval. Yes. I think we did follow the same or similar process back in the day at Ingles, you know, in the, and in the end, what they do, I don't know whether you would enter into a lease agreement, is it, is it same or similar process?
Yes, yeah, very similar process.
Okay.
And we would have to select a model where, because there's multiple models. I did like the classroom space piece. I just would have some reserves around like the wintertime, like what that would look like, right? But like, I still think there's wonderful opportunities to engage with staff. I can imagine with the creative minds that we have in Lynn Public Schools that folks would figure out how to utilize that space, a much-needed space, which I think is remarkable when I saw some of the other models that you presented. I just, you know, some of those logisticals, like I guess we could always hammer out later, but I do love the concept and tonight's logic around the Callahan Elementary Greenhouse proposal.
Thank you. Yeah, and we're definitely more than willing to like have that discussion too, so it'll be great.
Member Gailey?
I see that Member Capola has a question, so she can ask afterwards, because I don't have the gavel. But I really want to tell you how dear this is to my heart, because I am a Lynn girl, born and raised in Lynn, went out of this city to get a degree, and my minor was bioagriculture, and I never, ever, ever gardened in my whole life. But what I learned, what I actually accomplished through those years was amazing, and I really love this idea. I just know that as the Building and Grounds share, we have to go through certain channels, and we just have to work together and be very hopeful that this can come to fruition, because I just love the idea. I mean, if I was teaching science again, I would be like so happy to be over there in that location. And my only suggestion is, when I was in school way back when, we were doing it, we were growing vegetables in solar energy panel greenhouses that they were developing at the time, and that was back in 78. So, I was way ahead of the curve in not having any education in it. It was a wonderful experience. So, I know what this will do for our students, and I just really, really like the idea. So, hopefully it will come, come back, and we'll be voting yes instead of having to table it. Member Capola? And then, Mr. Pena?
I see that the one in Dorchester was built in 2002, so how many times has the structure itself had to be replaced? And, you know, is there any problem with, you know, people bothering it, destroying it?
Yeah, there, based on my recollection, there hasn't been any. It's really based on just like wear and tear, as things kind of, you know, over time, you just have to replace parts and pieces, so it's really just kind of like the wearing of years that go on, depending on, you know, the types of equipment that you use in terms of parts, so it's really just about the maintenance.
And in the area of the 2,000 square feet that would be used by families in the neighborhood, who would oversee that?
So, we would oversee that. So, currently, what we have is a rigorous application process where all of our gardeners, you know, fill out application to let us know like why they want to use the space, what can we provide to support. All of our gardeners also get a background check as well, because we are on school property. So, we would manage, you know, who comes into that space, and it'll be very controlled, and it'll, of course, it'll be, you know, locked, because, you know, students are a part of that community as well, so just being really mindful of those pieces. But we would take ownership of managing the safety of the space.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Member Pena?
Well, first of all, thank you for the presentation. And I was really, I'll be honest, when I first saw the idea and the project and the location, I was like, I was, I thought about safety, the hazards, you know, Ms. Capola talk about damage control and things, and then the more I thought about it, where it's located, and then, as you, as you did your presentation, you know, the family engagement, the community engagement, and when you involve stakeholders of the community, I think they tend to police themselves, and it's such a great way to, for students to see other cultures too, you know, see other different foods and get to know each other and places, you know, having community activities there. And then, it's located right next to Lynn Housing Authority Current Circle. That might be somewhere where you can probably try to get some collaboration and get some help with this project, and I could just picture and vision, a lot of different people in the community, different stakeholders, just getting involved, and I see, also see the, how much of an impact it could be with social-emotional learning. Like that, it's such a stress reliever to, you know, get in there, and a lot of these, you know, you know, different kids don't get that opportunity to see, you know, like, you know, she just, Ms. Gailey saw it, she didn't even do any gardening, and I could just see how much of an impact it would do, and I think it's a very, very, very good idea. I like that, I really appreciate it, thank you.
And Mr. Pena, I was digging 18-foot beds, 12 feet down, 12 inches down, 18 inches down.
the process.
I make a motion to move forward with the Callahan Elementary Greenhouse proposal to explore.
Roll call, please.
And move to the full committee.
Move to the full committee.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
you know, the family engagement, the community engagement, and when you involve stakeholders of the community, I think they tend to police themselves. And it's such a great way to, for students to see other cultures too.
Yes.
You know, see other different foods and get to know each other and places, you know, having community activities there. And then it's located right next to Lynn Housing Authority Current Circle. That might be somewhere where you can probably try to get some collaboration and get some help with this project. And I could just picture and envision a lot of different people in the community, different stakeholders, just getting involved. And I see, also see how much of an impact it could be with social-emotional learning. Like that is such a stress reliever, to, you know, get in there. And a lot of these, you know, you know, different kids don't get that opportunity to see, you know, like, you know, she just, Ms. Gailey saw it. She didn't even do any gardening. And I can just see how much of an impact it would do. And I think it's a very, very, very good idea. I like that. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
And Mr. Penya, I was digging 18-foot beds, 12 feet down, 12 inches down, 18 inches down.
Really, what we're looking for tonight is just a permission to continue to pursue the process.
I make a motion to move forward with the Callahan Elementary Greenhouse proposal to explore.
Second.
Roll call, please.
And move to the full committee.
And move to the full committee.
Move to the full committee.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Policy Subcommittee. Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
So tonight on the agenda for our Subcommittee is two, well, one policy in our handbook, KCBA, which is the Screening Procedures Policy, and then the discussion around also GCF, which was recommended by MASC. Initially, we had hoped to have a pretty vigorous discussion about this. However, there's a key part missing tonight, which is our attorney, Howard Greenspan. And there's some legal things to this. So what I think the committee is recommending, that we table this discussion and hold off until Howard is here and we can, you know, really have his opinion on these policies and how we move forward with them.
So I'd like to make a motion that we table these policies and move it to the full committee. Do I have to move a table? I don't think I do.
I think so.
No, it's just that we table it.
Just that we table it. So second.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes. Move to adjourn?
Second. Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
I'd like to call the Policy Subcommittee meeting to order.
Personnel.
Oh, I'm sorry, personnel. Personnel Subcommittee. Roll call, please.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Okay. We have two things on the agenda. One is a job posting for Administrator of Special Education.
Yes, and so I'm going to ask Dr. Alvarez if you want to join at the table in case there are any questions. So what you have before you is the posting for the Administrator of Special Education. It does not visually look the same, because we're trying to update our postings to look a little different and more professional, and have more components to it that speak to who we are and what we expect from applicants. The qualifications, the abilities, the job responsibilities are the same as what was in the previous job posting. The reason it is before you are the highlighted sections. So the job goal is, it's really just a description of what the role of this job is. It's a component that we're putting in all of our postings, and so it's specific to the Administrator of Special Education. It says, "The Administrator of Special Education is a member of the Executive Leadership Team. The Administrator of Special Education leads school and the district teams in the laws, regulations, and implementation of policies and procedures in the area of special education. Provides leadership in the ongoing development, implementation, and monitoring of evaluation, program development, and IEP compliance. Uses best practices to monitor student achievement and evaluate the educational programs in order to improve the educational outcomes of students in the Lynn Public Schools." So that section, you're going to start noticing, will be a common section in all of our postings, but we'll speak to specifically the job that it's for, okay? The qualifications are the same that was on the previous Special Education, Administrator of Special Education posting. The section that says "ability to" is another section that you will notice in future postings will have the same thing for all positions. And then when you look at the next page, under the section "Staff Supervision Data Evaluation of Program," you see there's one highlighted line. That's a new line that Dr. Alvarez requested to be added. Dr. Alvarez, I don't know if you want to speak to your purpose and want of that line.
Sure. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for going through this process of just trying to review. What we're really trying to do is align and make sure that in any job description, we're not missing, right, any key components of what the job description and the applicant needs to be able to do upon being selected for a position. And one of the key components is really looking at what the accountability process is in terms of, you know, outstanding reports and compliance for IEPs, 504s. And of course, the way that plays out throughout a regular school year is making sure that things are done in a timely manner, right? And that we have a timeline in which all of the reports are being addressed before they expire, and that we are searching for the personnel to address, whether it's therapy, whether it's speech therapy. You know, we know some of the shortages that are going on, but they, you know, we have to look at other ways of making sure that students are receiving what we have agreed to under federal compliance that students need to receive. So regardless of the disability notated in their IEP, what is it that they need? And that was one of the key things that stuck out to me, as I read through the job description, right, about what the responsibilities of this executive leader would be. To me, that is, you know, the accountability piece and being responsible for managing a team of educators under special education would be critical to be responsive, right, to and to provide us with answers at different points of the year, as we go through, again, that timeline that's so critical, that should never lapse, or where we are in a situation where we're trying to provide services to catch up, right? It's very difficult. It's easy to say that on paper. It is the worst-case scenario, right? And one that we're facing right now in terms of, you know, for example, the speech therapy that some of our students are not receiving. So we want to make sure that we avoid these situations at all costs, so students are being serviced appropriately.
So we are just looking for you to either ask your questions or approve.
Ms. Gailey? I just have, I just need a little bit of refresher, Superintendent. What is the acronym for ESE and DEEA?
Where are you in the?
Essential Duties and Responsibilities. Implement ESE and DEEA. I just.
Number two, under the.
Yeah, number two.
Yeah, those are state policies and regulations.
Okay, because that's why I didn't recognize. There's so many. Oh, and the other thing that I noticed on number five on that same page, Director of ELL and then the Executive Director of Curriculum, does that need to be corrected?
Yes. Should be MLE.
And it should be Executive?
It does say Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
No, Executive Director of MLE?
Oh, yes. Sorry, I went ahead of you.
Nope, that's okay. I just.
And you know what? I think it should be DESE, not ESE. And it should be IDEA.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So those will be corrected. Again, these were cut and pasted right off of the old one.
I know. I just noticed it now.
We're trying to update everything.
And I just, when I was going through this, Dr. Alvarez, I looked at number 15, and I put a great big "yes" with an exclamation point. Prepare quarterly and annual reports to ensure compliance of IEPs, 504s, per idea. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Penya?
Just wanted to make a motion.
I don't think you're on the Subcommittee, so I can't.
No, sorry, sir.
Yes, Doctor. Thank you. So in the event that the Policy Committee does the updates to our policy that might govern this, there is boilerplate language about nondiscrimination practices. And I just wondered if I could read what might be in that policy when we actually vote on it, and if it would be okay to just use this line in all of our subsequent job postings, so that the policy language is exactly the same as in the job posting. And this is what it may read when we eventually have that Policy Subcommittee meeting. "There will be no discrimination in the hiring process due to race, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, religion, disability, age, genetic information, active military veteran status, marital status, familial status, pregnancy or pregnancy-related condition, homelessness, ancestry, ethnic background, national origin, or any other category protected by state or federal law." So right now, that appears in this job posting and the next one. Under qualifications, there is a paragraph that says, "We encourage you to apply or reach out for more information if you meet some of the qualifications above. The Lynn Public Schools community celebrates that we live in a rapidly changing, increasingly diverse and connected world." And then there's, "We're committed to hiring educators that represent," and there's a list. I just would suggest for consistency's sake that we have, we get rid of that sentence and replace it with the policy language, so that our policy and our job posting are exactly the same. Excellent.
Can I ask, make a request?
Yeah.
Can you send that to me directly?
Aye.
Or is it in?
It's in.
Oh, it's right on the, okay.
Yeah, it's in the MSCA, I mean, sorry, MASC. Too many same letters in different orders. The MASC Suggested Policy, again, if, when, once we get there, it will become part of the policy.
Okay.
Thank you.
I see it, yeah.
Oh, thank you. I'm perfectly fine with that. I just would be a little hesitant with us not adopting that just yet. To make the assumption might be, we probably will, but to make the assumption right now, I guess would be in, that's just my concern with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think for the, that's a small part of the policy, I think, the verbiage around the nondiscrimination. And I think the, my understanding of what that language do is just kind of broaden the statement about supporting diverse candidates. So I don't see an issue. Unless a member has an issue, I think they should raise it, but I wouldn't see an issue. Because even if there are parts of that policy that don't make it through, I think that one is directed at expanding the scope of it. It also, what you're doing by taking, by voting on the posting is you're not changing the policy, you're just changing the verbiage of this particular posting. So it wouldn't have effects going forward, but, yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Is there a motion?
I'd like to move the position of Administrator of Special Education as presented with the change noted, and move it to the full committee.
Second, is there a second?
I said second.
Oh, she said second?
Yeah.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Okay, and the next job posting is Executive Director of Data Assessment and Accountability.
And I'm going to present the rationale for that.
Okay.
The hope and the goal of this presentation is to support committee members and their understanding of the critical importance to data literacy and data capacity, and to realize its undeniable value in achieving equitable outcomes for all students. It can be challenging to change the culture of a school or a district from one that bases many decisions on tradition to one that firmly grounds all decisions in data. However, to substantially improve student outcomes, it is critical that schools and districts develop a culture in which data are used at all levels to make decisions related to policies, programs, placement, and practice. Our first slide presents us with the guiding question for this proposal. How will we create an effective and systematic approach that anchors data in all decision-making to ensure equitable outcomes for all learners? Our next slide. Our next slide details our current state in the Lynn Public Schools. We have, and this slide is done to really make a dramatic point. We have 25 platforms or programs that require data literacy and data capacity. We have 27 schools needing data to inform decisions. Within our schools, we have 146 PLCs needing data to improve instruction. Within our PLCs, we have 1,997 educators needing to use data to drive and inform instruction. Within our schools is a total of 6,319 classrooms dependent on data to improve student outcomes. LPS has over 16,000 students who deserve good data that supports good outcomes. And we have one district data assessment and accountability staff person. The current state highlights how LPS lacks an ability to support a culture where data is consumed and utilized in improving student achievement and outcomes. Our next slide. Our next slide further highlights the need and provides us with a dramatic visual of who the current Assistant Director of Data Assessment and Accountability is responsible to in terms of data support and data education. We can begin at our schools with individual teachers and school leaders, to all departments at central office, to all the online learning and assessment platforms utilized in our schools, to the preparation of all district data presentations, and to DESI compliance reporting. This is an overwhelming expectation and responsibility for one person, and the outcome is a position that does not support the desired practices and data use that improve student achievement. Next slide. Depicted in our next slide is our problem of practice. As a district, our current capacity to effectively use data to make data-informed decisions to create equitable outcomes for all students is impaired by a lack of staff, by a lack of systems, and by a lack of structures. We must build a vibrant culture of inquiry and effective data use that enhances the work of educators and puts front and center student achievement. Next slide. This slide outlines for us how a district data assessment and accountability department works in service of all departments in all schools through a focus on the following five functions. Function one is vision and policy management. This function focuses on creating and articulating the vision for data use and data protocols, modeling and teaching the expectations and practices, implementing and upholding policies for data use in the district. Function two is data management. This entails identifying data to be collected, managing data infrastructure and access, and designing meaningful data displays. Function three is inquiry, analysis, and action. This involves selecting models for data inquiry that will be used district-wide, and also modeling and teaching the inquiry process. Function four is professional development, providing all stakeholders with needed professional development on data use and the platforms they are expected to utilize. And function five is monitoring and communication, establishing good communication with all stakeholders for the sharing of results and best practice. For a district to be successful in building a culture of data use, there must be in place leadership staff to fulfill essential functions and support a vision that emphasizes data use and its critical importance to both the teaching and the learning. Next slide. The next slide reemphasizes and restates the critical importance and impact of data assessment and accountability in communicating a common vision and goals, and optimizing resources needed to support data-driven decision-making, providing needed professional development in data use and overall literacy, supporting a calibrated process and protocol for for data analysis, and sharing proven solutions and best practices. Our last slide. Our last slide presents the organizational chart for the proposed Data Assessment and Accountability Department that includes the newly proposed position of an Executive Director of Data Assessment and Accountability, and the eventual goal of three Assistant Directors, one of which exists now. And the proposal is for an Assistant Director of Data and Assessment and Accountability to support STEM pre-K to 12, an Assistant Director of Data and Assessment and Accountability to support humanities pre-K to 12, and an Assistant Director of Data Assessment and Accountability to service all district departments. We did not want to present you with just a proposed job description this evening. We felt it critically important to highlight in detail why this position and this department is needed and so necessary to our collective pursuit to raise student achievement. As with any good lesson, we will sum up this presentation by returning to our primary objective and our guiding question. How will we create an effective and systematic approach that anchors data in all decision-making to ensure equitable outcomes to all learners? We are proposing a district data team and leadership capacity to work in service of all schools and all departments. These important district structures and personnel will provide a vital leadership role in data use and data capacity, support informed, data-driven decision-making, create change in practices and understandings, and, most importantly, facilitate equitable outcomes for all of our students. Thank you, and Dr. Alvarez and I will take any questions you might have.
Before you ask questions, I just want to note something. The document you should be looking at is the one that is highlighted. There were two items that Dr. Alvarez and I, in collaboration, added. Just wanted you to note that. Now you can ask questions.
And if I may, I'd just like to expand on those two highlighted sections. On the first page, under qualifications, it was more about the doctorate degree in educational administration or an appropriate discipline preferred. And that is really because, in order to do some of the actual, when we go, if we look through the ability to, the analysis and interpretation of statistical information, right? It's critical for us to have those that have experience and a degree that includes a number of courses in statistical analysis. Perhaps, I mean, if we're, I would hope, right, to attract at least one psychometrician, maybe two. And there are ways of doing that in collaboration with, I reached out, actually, today, and I received a response from the Office of Strategic and Community Partnerships at Harvard, where they have fellows that, for two years, they pay half their salary, and we might be able to pick up the other half. And so, after, in the, at the end of the second year, they do a capstone, which could be part of the research, right, that we are seeking to do in longitudinal studies in terms of, how are all of these platforms, you know, Kim was referring to how many platforms we have for teachers, right? How are we using them? What is the data collected over longitudinal study? So, three to five years. We started last year. Do we know where, do we need to make adjustments? What curriculum do we continue with, right? And so, if we're using it with fidelity based on how the curriculum was selected, do we need to make adjustments to that as well? Sometimes, it's the frequency at which we schedule certain subjects and how they're taught, and how many minutes, you know, students are receiving in those subjects. So, that was one of them. And then, the second one was being responsible for that research and those studies, which would be really difficult to do without the background and degree to be able to conduct this with fidelity in terms of, you know, as it is, we don't have a research mechanism within our district. Most of them either collaborate with a college to have an institutional review board, or have a research review committee at the very least, which we are hoping to institute with some of our executive leaders and possibly some of your committee members. Dr. Magnolia? So, you know, it really lends itself to be a position where we can have our own standing research in terms of what is working for our students based on the delivery of instruction. So, those were the changes that Deb and I spoke about today and wanted to make sure that we highlighted for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think Ms. Gaitley had her hand up, and Dr. Magnolia, next.
First of all, I like that slide that shows everything that the, then, for the past couple of years, Assistant Director of Data has been carrying on her shoulders, and I would like to give a big shout-out to her for all her hard work and how, after looking at this presentation, I realized how much work was on her shoulders and how well she did considering what we needed. So, that being said, I, kudos to this-
Our Assistant Director, are we talking about Josh Murray? Yeah, the Assistant Director of Data and Assessment is currently Josh.
Oh, I was thinking about, and data, and the data center.
Oh, Mara Shira.
Different job.
Different job.
Oh. Totally different.
Very different job.
So, this is for curriculum?
This, that has nothing to do with-
There is intersection, but this is, this is not part of the data center. So, they support the platforms-
Yep.
Right, from the IT perspective. This is really focused on, what are we doing in curriculum and instruction in terms of, and how are we pushing out, right, to our, and supporting our principals and teachers in terms of the data that we, that we do generate, and how are they using it in the classroom?
Yes.
What we realized was, in having conversations and listening to some of, you know, the needs that principals expressed throughout the budgeting process, was, you know, there are a lot of different data protocols that are being used. We really need to move towards, because we are so large and we have a population of students that may be at different schools, right, at different times, we all, we really need to move towards a process in which we're examining the data in the same way, so that instruction is equitable, same instruction whether you go to Callahan, whether you go to another elementary, it doesn't matter. And that is, that is our goal. We cannot have, right, equitable outcomes unless we are, our educational, our pedagogy, methodology, and delivery really connects the context with what our learners need. And unfortunately, and fortunately, right, it's, it's good and bad. Many years ago, we used to do this, and I, Kim and I laughed about this. I said, "Remember when we used to put Scantrons through a machine? And we'd have to do item analysis and figure out which items students missed, and we'd go back and reteach those," you know? So, now, everything is automated. But at the same time, in this world of, you know, digital technology, we have all of these platforms where it becomes an additional, it's a, it's a completely, it's another layer that principals and teachers need to now manage and put out and analyze. And so, the group, the work that we're doing in the time where teachers are doing professional learning, community time, planning time, the ILTs are getting together, we're talking to parents, and even students owning their own, right, data in terms of, what do I need to learn, right, to manage where my growth from this year to next year? So, this team essentially would be supporting that on the instructional side versus the technology side.
Okay.
And I also want to highlight, through the budget process, principal after principal after principal highlighted the need for a data capacity and support in that. I mean, I believe it was the biggest theme in the budget process.
And really requesting coaching, right? A lot of coaching, which we understand, but I think that that needs to, as we look at going forward and what is the vision of how we deliver this, we cannot put 27 coaches, right, in our schools. And the reality is, this is something that is long overdue in terms of how, right, we support our teachers in the classroom, and a lot of training and professional development, and, not just summer professional development, we're talking about coaching in the classroom. So, now, we're coming to support you and modeling and helping you through your lesson, and how do you integrate, right, this, all this data from these platforms into what you're doing in your lessons? Because we're data-rich, and, you know, what happens when we don't, you know, we have all of it. We are not using it effectively at this time.
Dr. Magnolia?
An analysis poor, that's what I would add.
Yes.
Okay, so, help me, from the higher ed lens, sort of understand something about this Executive Director, because sometimes, things don't always translate well. So, when I see this, what makes sense to me and what doesn't make sense to me? What makes sense to me is the doctorate degree in educational administration or appropriate discipline. Obviously, a lot of social scientists are trained to do that kind of analysis very well. What kind of doesn't make sense to me at this Executive Director level, but would at the Assistant Director level, is that five years of successful teaching experience? Because a lot of people who do that kind of number crunching may not have risen up through teaching ranks. I'm, I'm, I know there's plenty of mathematicians, plenty of, you know, folks who do want to crunch numbers, who relish their time in the classroom, but I am not, I've never encountered in my higher ed field, the people who start at that high level, who can put together the analysis, the numbers, the assessment, everything that you've laid out here, but who came up that way. So, I've seen people start from the educational path and then find themselves in a number of different places. And I've seen people who have sort of risen from the classroom teaching to do that coaching model you're talking about. But I'm just wondering, and this, again, it might be my higher education lens here, but at this Executive Director level, if that five years of teaching experience is a necessary prerequisite to being able to have the meta-analysis that the Executive Director has to have in order to both manage the department and also realize which of the data is where we should be focusing our efforts?
So, I would say, there, there aren't many, right? And if this is a unicorn, I think we need to have a lot of flexibility in terms of, you know, what it is that we look for, that foundational background. However, you know, the reason we continued, we left the teaching experience in there is, it's really difficult, right, to, and working with a psychometrician or working with someone who's done that level of data analysis, to even have sometimes conversations, right, about instructional goals, refocusing and priorities. So, in order to coach a teacher, or work with a principal in terms of instructional priorities, how do we, you know, we need to find someone that has had some classroom experience, and, you know, hopefully, also has decided to look for a doctoral degree in terms of what we're seeking. Is it, you know, ambitious? Probably. But I'm really hoping that we can, we can still find someone that fits both of these categories, because I think it's of utmost importance, right? When you've, it's very difficult to be a teacher or principal and be taught by someone who's never been in a classroom.
That's fair. I think I might just change it to say, "Successful teaching experience."
Preferred.
Preferred.
Okay.
Well, can I also just note, the teaching experience could also be at the higher ed level, right? I mean, I'm sure, Dr. Magnolia, as a teacher, as a professor, you know how to teach and could work with others around, you know, instruction. So, but I think, I was going to recommend, the preferred would at least give that flexibility.
Yeah. I'm also thinking that, having recently hired a Director of Assess, actually, I don't think she's a Director, but she's an assessment person right out of a doctoral program, who prior to her doctoral program had done what we might call community teaching. And so, her lens on assessment is, well, if what you're doing is you're not necessarily working in, say, a state education framework, what you're looking to is to use metrics that are community-derived metrics. How do you build assessment that way? And it was fascinating to think about multiple measures from a non-prescriptive lens, right? So, DESI has a prescriptive lens, right? We have what are called iPads datas that are prescriptive lenses, and this community teaching experience does not fall under these traditional categories. But when you're talking about assessment, it's valuable if what you care about is authentic assessment.
Right.
And so, that's what I want to make sure, that the job posting doesn't preclude people who have a wealth of ideas, but not necessarily that fit into that rigid box.
Thank you for that, Dr. Magnolia, and I, so, you're suggesting preferred, and I think that that would be-
And to get rid of the five, so, just, "Successful teaching experience in an urban environment, preferred."
Yeah.
Thank you for your presentation and your very well-thought proposal. I had some questions around the current state that we're in. How many years have we been operating this way with one district data assessment and accountability?
Long time.
Is that person, who else?
Long time.
Has that been?
Prior to, it probably is about eight, eight years, and prior to that, it was zero.
Eight years. Mr. Mower's in the back, I believe, has been-
Yes.
-that person. How many years has Mr. Mower been doing that?
Eight years.
Eight years?
Seventeen.
And there was somebody in the position prior to Mr. Mower?
Okay. Well, I want to say thank you to Mr. Mower.
Yes.
Because I think he round-paws. And I recognize, I don't know if, I'm very, I'm a strong visual learner, if you recognize the need, you see how many arrows that point at each of those departments and how much work that was done. It takes a lot of effort, and we're grateful to have had, had him at the position that he's at.
I can personally tell you, we've received emails at 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock at night from him, or five or six in the morning from him.
Presentation finally ready at 1:00 a.m.
Well, when I see the problem of practice, when you put it as a district, "Our current capacity to effectively use data to make data-informed decisions to create equitable outcomes for all students is impaired," that word hit me hard, "by the lack of staff, systems, and structures." And I think what really stood out to me when you presented this was the impact, and one of those impacts on, you know, impact of a data assessment and accountability department, one of the key items that I really find very strong within this proposal is optimize the allocation of human and financial resources across schools and departments. I think we've got to be strategic on how we spend our financials, especially with, you know, we had an abundance of resources from the Student Opportunity Act, and we have resources, eventually, those, some of those resources are going to be dwindling, and I think it's going to be crucial to, to really have a identification system, structure like this, to really identify key investment areas. Also, key areas where we can increase data equity, because I think that's a very important piece to this team, is to figure out where we could find our data equity strengths, also look at the weaknesses that we have, and develop an interpretation and an analysis that's going to allow us to be very strategic with instruction, to allow our staff to improve their game, from principals to teachers to, it's a, it's a robust plan, and you guys are very well-prepared. And I really, really want to say thank you for all the work. My last question would be the organizational structure that you guys came to. Now, can you kind of explain to me how we came down to this as the final, final structure?
Obviously, the reasoning for the Executive Director, we've made clear, but if we just create an Executive Director and no, and no support for that- But if we just create an executive director and no, and no support for that, and no leadership, I want to emphasize leadership support for that. So it, in terms of, we broke it out in terms of content. So, you know, when you're dealing in content, you're dealing in platforms. So, you know, you, you would have one assistant director who's dealing with science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, and would be the master of those platforms and that data, right? You don't want somebody having to do the whole span, right? And then your next person, humanities, and that would be ELA, social studies, your world languages, you know, that person supporting those teachers, that content. And then there's still a critical need to support the district administration, you know, your curriculum office, your MLE office, your special education office, your compliance, nursing, HR. Every department here needs data support to make data decisions. And when we talk about equity, it's especially necessary here.
Okay. I don't know if I asked this yet, but the projected cost of this department, have we looked at some of those logistics yet from the budget side?
So the position itself?
One position already exists. So it's the addition of two assistant directors and one executive director.
But today, we're only voting on the executive director.
Correct.
Okay. Ms. Gaetley?
I hate to disagree with the qualifications, but I really appreciate seeing a five years of successful teaching experience in an urban education or urban environment. And I would like to have that to be kept in there because, um, as a former teacher in an urban district for 33 and a half years, I like to know that the person coming in sort of walked in my shoes, that understood what I need to understand, so they could probably help me better. So I think having the five years of successful teaching experience in an urban environment is really important in the K-12. So I would like to keep that, if you want to add yours, but I, I would like to keep that in here, if you want to add what you want to add, but I do want that five years of experience.
Mr. Duggan?
Yeah, just to echo what Member Gaetley said, I, I think that is important, too. I think Dr. Alvarez, you said something very important, that it's hard as a, again, speaking from a teacher's perspective, it's hard as a teacher to, um, you know, take direction from someone that hasn't walked in my shoes, as Member Gaetley said. I'm fine with preferred, but I do think we need to keep that there. The other part of it is, I think, just because this is so unique to Lynn Public Schools, we also might want to add qualifications, experience in LPS, preferred. You know, I don't want to close the box too small, but I think having an understanding of our situation and where we're at would be a really important part of this job as well.
Okay, so are we ready for a motion?
I, I just have a question, if that's okay before. Which is, um, what we do in the instance of one member wanting to change something and one member wanting to leave something, do we need to move it, basically vote for the change first and then move it with or without the change?
So, do you want me to, go ahead?
Well, um, I, I would go along with keeping the five years, and I'm fine with the preferred. So if we take a vote in that direction, it seems as though that's how we'll move it up. And then when it gets moved up?
I'm okay with just putting preferred after it. If we want to leave five years' successful teaching experience in an urban environment, but add preferred after that, that's okay with me.
That's okay with me. All right. So is that the motion, then?
Yeah. So I'd like to move this position, Executive Director, Director of Data Assessment and Accountability, with the change of the word preferred after the qualification of five years' successful teaching experience in an urban environment, and move it to the full committee.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're just going to do a recess. Open mic session. Open mic is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views on matters of concern of the school committee. Assessments are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least 18 years of age or enrolled in high school in North Public Schools District, and have been discussed their views with a student government representative. The chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if he or she feels that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or a member of school administration in attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. The sessions will promptly commence 15 minutes prior to the start of the regular school committee meeting. Anyone here wishing to speak at open mic? Great. There's a list, there's a list already. They signed up. All right.
Mary's in the restroom, so I think somebody else has to grab it.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Michael Lopez, if you could state your name and address, please.
Like all good teachers, I have a handout. Good evening. My name is Michael Lopez. My address is 294 Wentworth Avenue, Lowell, Massachusetts. So, um, I'm here with some of my colleagues to talk about the block scheduling at Lynn English High School and Classical High School and Frederick Douglass. And as our first speaker from our school, I'm going to give you a little bit of an overview of everything that has happened as far as this schedule is concerned, in case anybody's not too clear on how all of this stuff has gone down. In 2019-2020's school year, the schedule change was mandated on us with no warning. We had no input. And it was implemented in order to accommodate the early college program and allow seniors to leave the campus and go to partnership schools. In 2021-22, the teachers met with Dr. Tutwiler twice, once by Zoom and once in person, to voice our concerns about the detrimental effect that the schedule was having on our school and specifically the impact to the teachers and the students. After both meetings, we were basically shut down and said, "You have to live with this thing for at least two years. You have to live with anything for at least two years in order for you to be able to know whether or not it's going to work." In 2020, in this school year, a survey was released to faculty and students about the schedule and what we thought about the schedule. The specific details and information about that survey have not yet been released, but I have it on good authority that it was overwhelmingly unpopular among both the teachers and the students. And that the schedule itself is not doing what it intended to do. It's not helping with overcrowding. Class sections have been closed, and, which exacerbates overcrowding in other classes. AP sections have been closed. And most concerning, this particular program that precipitated the whole change of the schedule serves a maximum in our building of 120 students. In a building of 2,200 kids, in a building designed to hold 1,400, but that's another story, that's less than 6% of the population. And I believe that this message that is being sent to the students and the community is that the students that matter at our school are the ones that are going to college, and that everybody else needs to bend over backwards to accommodate these students. Teachers are leaving because of this schedule. We have teachers that are engaging in bumping and beating that have never done that before in order to get into another situation because of the schedule. The union reps in our building, we put out a survey to our teachers, and out of 133, we got 77 back, and one single person in that whole group supported the schedule. Everybody else was against it. We know that alternative schedules have been proposed, workable alternative schedules that allow the, the early college to continue, but that they have been rejected. And so when I looked at the school committee...
That was three minutes, but if you want to wrap up?
Okay. Well, just when I looked at the, at the website, LPS for the school committee, one of the things that it says on there is, "We believe students are best served by continuing discovery of and supporting the needs of families, staff, and stakeholders." And so what we're asking you to do is to not continue this schedule next year, because we can't take it anymore. It's awful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Jeff Bigler.
I'm a game teacher like Michael. I also have handouts, so, there we go. Self, because those are also manuals, so apologies for... So, here we go. So Jeff Bigler, 8 Little Nahont Road, physics teacher at Lynn English. And I'm also here to follow up on Michael's comments on the schedule. And what I want to talk about are some of the problems with the current schedule. You have everything that I'm going to talk about here, so I'm just going to mention some highlights. But basically, some of the problems that we've seen. One is that students saturate after about 45 minutes. And at that point, it's hard for them to learn more new content. You can reinforce, you can add depth, but the problem is more depth, less breadth is in conflict with the needs of MCAS or AP classes or even state frameworks, which demand more breadth than we can do with the existing schedule. Teachers need class periods that are all the same length. Almost every school that does block scheduling, that's the case. That is not the case here. Monday, Wednesday, Friday classes are 90, 60, and 90 minutes. Tuesday, Thursday are 120 minutes each. And when we do different kinds of activities, labs, you know, whatever we do, it fits into class periods differently. And so that means a Monday, Wednesday, Friday class and a Tuesday, Thursday class, even if it's the same subject, different sections, are really two different preps. And so that makes it much harder on teachers. Also, we don't have prep every day. We only have prep on one period in the cycle. If I have prep on Thursday, I give a formative assessment on Friday. Next chance I have to really change anything is Tuesday, after I've seen the Monday, Wednesday, Friday kids again on Monday. So it makes it hard to follow up on that. There's the issue of kids forgetting what they learned Thursday to the following Tuesday. In terms of the schedule being like a college schedule, I've heard that claimed, college kids don't have four 90-minute classes in a row. They'll have one 60-minute or 90-minute class, a break, and another one. So imagine, if you will, being in four consecutive 90-minute meetings with no break in between except to dash from one to the other, 30 minutes for lunch, and actually having, being able to focus. This is what, I mean, as adults, we would find this really difficult. But it's not adults that have to do this. These are 14, 15, 16-year-old kids. So that's also a problem for them. Most kids really dislike the schedule for that reason. They always say, "Can we please move away from it?" Students who are late to school always miss the same class. And one of the biggest challenges, specific to English, there's a sign in the cafeteria that says, you know, "Building code capacity 442." We have 2,200 kids, about 300 are absent every day, so call it 1,900 in the building. Divide that by four lunches. That is 475 students plus about 25, you know, staff and cafeteria workers in the cafeteria. So we've got, sorry, I'm, final point. So basically, we're over, if we can switch to a schedule with five lunches, we can alleviate that. So we need a schedule that could do that. And last comment is, I think it would be a kindness to Dr. Alvarez if we solve this problem now, before she starts, rather than have you inherit a, an existing problem with 200 unhappy teachers. So thank you for your attention. And the current schedule and the proposal that seems to have the most support around here, this was originally on the school committee agenda one year ago tomorrow and was tabled. But, so all the committee members who were here at that time have a color version of this somewhere in your pile of papers from last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Barbara Jones?
I'm a math teacher. I know my paragraphs, so there you go.
You have numbers.
I have numbers, but I didn't bring them to, well, I have some, but not a lot. I teach Algebra I, and I teach five sections of it. I have three inclusion sections. One is Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and the other two are Tuesday, Thursday. They're pretty equal in ability and competence across the classes. I'm so much further ahead on my Monday, Wednesday, Friday, because I get 90 minutes, 60 minutes, 90 minutes. So in those 90 minutes, I can get a good, I don't know, 50 minutes of actual hands-on instruction, whether it's through lectures or videos or small groups or one-to-one. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, I have kids for two hours. They tap out after 60 minutes. They will stare at their work, they will look busy, but they are saturated. They are behind my Monday, Wednesday, Friday by sheer dint of too much time squished together. I teach two sections of what we call T-classes, the multi-language learners. Last year, my sections for those classes were on Tuesdays and Thursdays. These are students that are coming here, the vast majority of them, without a formal education since early elementary school. So my Algebra I students, to whom I'm to teach Algebra I standards, have never seen multiplication or division. They've never seen signed arithmetic. But I'm supposed to scaffold that, right, and get them up to speed while they're acquiring the language. But when you have five days in between classes, whatever they did on Thursday is gone on Tuesday, and you start Tuesday fresh. And then on Thursday, you get a new student every week. So this schedule is killing us. I have kids in my first-period classes on the Monday, Wednesday, Friday, when they're only 90, 60, or 90, that maybe get 20 minutes a week of math, because that's when they get to school. I have kids in the afternoon, mostly my multi-language learners, that are working because they have to support themselves because they're unaccompanied, that leave after lunch every day because they have to work, because they have to pay rent, and they need to pay for food and all of that. So my can't-get-up kids are missing all of math. And my, "I have to go to work to survive" kids are missing all of math. But our waterfall schedule, it spreads the pain. It says, "Okay, if you sleep, you know, you can't get into school for first period for whatever reason, whether it's you're getting kids to school that are your siblings or whatnot, you get a chance to hit all your classes." This block schedule doesn't work. It doesn't work for the kids, it doesn't work for the teachers, and it's frankly, it's killing the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak at open mic? Please, state your name and address, please.
My name is Erin LaColst. I live at 18 Millivaux Drive in Lynn. I also teach at Lynn English. I teach with a college professor in the early college program, and I have for the past couple of years. So I understand the reason for the block scheduling. But the classes that I teach with him, he does not stay for two hours. None of them do. So when I teach my early, my early college class, he's, or, and the other professors that are there, are there for an hour and 15 minutes, which gives me time afterward to, to work with them. But if we're basing a lot of this off of the time that we need for the college professors to be in there, that two hours is, is too much, frankly. So that is, is one really large problem with the schedule. The other problem, and Barbara was just kind of touching on this, is that because the classes are fixed in the day, my first-period kids, kids who have chronic tardies, I don't see. They miss history every single time. Or they come in at 9:30 in the morning, which means that they, you know, are there right at the very end of the class. So they're marked present, but they've missed the class. And then they're asleep in the first period... And then they're asleep in the first period, and then the kids that I have at the end of the day are exhausted. So not giving students some ability to like move and fluctuate really does impede what it is that they can successfully do in a classroom. And so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you so much, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at open mic? Please. State your name and address.
All right. Thank you, and hello, everyone. Dominic Copeland, 38 Hathaway Avenue, Beverly, Massachusetts. And I'm also a teacher at Lynn English High School and a union rep. So I just wanted to say for the, our first thing, we, you know, we all believe in and support early college over at all the high schools. We think it's a great program. It's a worthwhile program. It's just the way that it was rolled out, it's not working. It's not equitable for the students. It's creating some great inequities, especially with our learners, who are part of our most vulnerable population. Because again, if you have a student and you have them on a Thursday, and all of a sudden, they're not, you're not seeing them again until Tuesday, that's five days. And like we're talking about the data, there's no data to support that as being a successful way to teach. I think the data will prove otherwise. So we, as a district, are putting ourselves in jeopardy of trying to achieve our own objectives through the way that the schedule is set up. So right now, even more than it being about us as teachers, it's about our students, it's about them gaining ground, getting better, especially with the MCAS testing and so forth. If you have a student that comes in and we're doing SEI, trying to teach them, that's supposed to be an immersive experience. But it can't be immersive if you're only seeing them once to twice a week. Because if they miss one of those days, if they miss a Tuesday or Thursday, now you won't see them for seven days. And even if you're the greatest teacher in the world, you give them the greatest information in the world, five days later, they've forgotten that. You know, and they might go home to their communities, and they might not be utilizing any stuff, any of the stuff that we're teaching them. So the only time that they might get it is when they're with us in the school, in the school environment. And if we have less time with them, again, we're setting them up for failure. So I think the most important part for us is, even if you say we're not sure if that's the, for us to change the schedule, if that's not the right route, then let's utilize the data and have that tell us if it is the right route or not. You know, to us, we're the canaries in the mine, we're the boots on the ground, and we're coming to tell you, there's a problem, there's an issue, and it's only going to get worse. And it's taking us away from what we're trying to accomplish as a district. And I think that if we can change that schedule, have more touch and more time with our students, we can start to gain more ground on those objectives. We can start to, when we get brand-new students who don't speak any English, by the time they're done with us throughout that year, they're gaining great ground because we've had great touches with them. But right now, we're always fighting attrition. You know, we can get the greatest lesson on that Tuesday, but they miss that Thursday, we see them next Tuesday. Thursday, give a great lesson, and see them until next Tuesday, five days later, they forgot what we ever taught them. So those are the difficulties that we're finding, the things that we'd like to address as soon as possible. I don't think that we can wait another year with the schedule, because again, it's just not equitable, and it's just not working. Thank you for your time, greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you so much. Anyone else wishing to speak at open mic? Anyone for open mic? Last call for open mic. Okay, seeing none, we'll close open mic and just want to thank all the teachers for sharing this feedback. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Folks, okay to go into the, all right, so I'd like to call to order the sixth regular meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos.
Present.
Member Capola.
Present.
Member Dugan.
Present.
Member Gaitley.
Present.
Member Magnolia.
Present.
Member Peña.
Present.
Mayor Nicholson.
Present.
You all, please rise, salute to the flag, and remain standing for a moment of silence.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all, please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of Marilyn Rebicki, retired paraprofessional, passed March 6, 2023. Thank you. All right, the first item is the minutes.
Make a motion to accept the first special meeting on March 2, 2023.
Second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries, appointments and elections.
Yes, we have a few. First, Matt Cronin, I don't know if he's here tonight, but Matt Cronin came to us from Marblehead Charter School. He has been awarded the Director of Computer Implementation. He is leading the data center, and I have to say, he has hit the ground running. He has done tremendous work already in helping us move forward with Power School, which has been a nightmare this year. So he's been a great asset and will absolutely intersect with all the data talk that we've been doing. He will be part of working with us in that realm. So I just want to congratulate Matt and welcome him to the Lynn Public Schools team. I also have Guillermo Sinelli, and I know he's here. I am so proud and honored to say that Guillermo, who has been with us for the past nine years, since 2014, he has worked for us as the family engagement translator for the Lynn Public Schools, and has been awarded the Manager of Translation Interpretation. It was a unanimous vote for him to be chosen. He was the highlight of the interviews. He's done tremendous work with our family and community coordinators in our school, our AKA parent liaisons. And so I am so pleased to have Guillermo officially part of our team, in part of our LSAA union. Guillermo, I don't know if you want to come forward and...
I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the superintendent, and leadership team, and the school committee for this opportunity to continue this work here at LPS. Like Deb said, I've been doing this type of work for about nine years now, and it's certainly an area of need, as it's been growing year after year. And in terms of language access and equity, it's obviously something that's very important. And I'm really looking forward to working with the staff to improve the services that we offer for our students' families and their caregivers here in Lynn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to bring forward Sarah McIsaac. Sarah has been an experienced administrator and educator in the Lynn Public Schools for the past 23 years with us. She has done tremendous work for the Lynn Public Schools. She worked at Cobbitt for a number of years, and now is at Callahan, or, well, yeah, technically now, is still at Callahan, and has worked, district work for us. She's been an invaluable educator in the Lynn Public Schools, and I'm very proud that she will be the principal of the A. Born School.
Well, thank you again for this opportunity. I'm really excited and honored to join the A. Born community. I look forward to building relationships with parents, families, community, teachers, staff, and to most importantly, to increase student achievement. So thank you, and I'm excited to get started. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to bring up Mrs. Kenwi Valdez. I neglected to put Mrs. Her husband was not happy with me, and I don't blame him. Kenwi has been with us, she actually was one of our first dual-language teachers in our new program at Harrington. Also worked at Cobbitt for a number of years. Currently is at Tracy as the interim principal, and will be our official Connery principal beginning for next year. I am very proud of the work you've done and the growth that you've made over the years in Lynn. How many years total?
Twelve in Lynn.
Twelve. So congratulations, we're very pleased to have you.
Thank you. I have to say something because everyone else did. Thank you so much to everyone at the committee. I'm really excited for the work that we're going to do. I'm really excited to be back in dual language. My heart is really just bursting at the seams. And I have to say, this has nothing to do with me, but Sarah McIsaac is amazing, and she was my mentor when I first started as a teacher, and I am who I am today, thanks to her, so.
I'd now like to bring up Mrs. Amy Nerrick. This is another proud mama moment for me. Amy has worked at the Harrington School for a number of years as an educator. She taught while I was principal there. We were colleagues as teachers there, actually, for a little while, and worked as my program specialist for a while. And so Amy has a number of years, what's your total year, 24 years in Lynn Public Schools, has also done a lot of district professional development, and has been at the Ford School this year as interim principal, and they fell in love with her, and I'm not surprised. Amy is just a quiet soul who gives a lot of herself, and so I'm very pleased to say that she is going to be the official principal of the Ford School. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I did have the unique opportunity of stepping in in July at the Ford School, and the families are incredible, the students are amazing, and the staff is exceptional. So I thank you all for the opportunity. Superintendent Rogero, you were one of my first mentors, and you inspired me to go down this path, so I thank you for that. And I am just honored and privileged to serve the families of the Highlands, and I just look forward to many years of being there, so thank you all.
We're almost there. Next is Mrs. Carrie Nakosha, come on up. Carrie has also been in Lynn for a number of years, your total number?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three years. Worked at Shoemaker School, was an administrator at Breed, is currently interim program specialist at Tracy, working with Mrs. Valdez as partners. Carrie was a very strong interview, and her work speaks for itself. She is going to be a great continuation, I will say, of leadership at Tracy School, and we're very proud to say that you are going to be a leader in that school. Congratulations.
Thank you. It is an honor to be here. I've been in the Lynn Public Schools, like you know, for 23 years. But I also was a student, and I grew up in this city, and I'm very proud to have my family here with me. My poor children have been here since 6:30.
Loves you.
This is a great learning experience for them, and I am thrilled to remain at Tracy. I fell in love with Tracy. It is bittersweet that I'm losing Kenwi. It's been a fabulous partnership, and I've learned a lot from her. I will miss her, but I will carry on what we set out to do. So thank you.
Thank you.
And last, but not least, Elizabeth Dele Ortega, come on up. Elizabeth comes with many years of educational experience. She has held many positions throughout her career, from school social worker to clinical coordinator, to school adjustment counselor, to currently an assistant principal. She has taught small groups, she has taught professional development, and really was a strong candidate in her interview. We were very, I mean, the committee was pretty unanimous for you to move forward, and in your final interview, you did an exceptional job. And so I'm very pleased, I can't say you've had any years in Lynn, but why...
Not yet.
You will have your first year next year, and we're very happy to have you join the Lynn Public Schools, and we welcome you. Congratulations.
Thank you, I'm really excited to be coming to Lynn. I'm coming from all the way in Revere, so way far away, and before that, I was in Boston. So I'm just finding my home here in Lynn. I'm really excited to be back in elementary school. I've been in middle for the last eight years as an assistant principal, so I'm really excited to be part of the Sewell Anderson community and getting a home here in Lynn, so thank you.
Congratulations to all, thank you all so much for all the great work. All right, next item is the community school presentation.
Can we steal that chair next to you, Gary?
The chairs are helpful, so that, to make sure people speak into the microphone.
Oh, okay.
Because for people that are watching the video.
Okay. I have the pleasure of introducing. I'm very excited to be introducing our United Way partners and friends who have a longstanding relationship with LPS, supporting many wonderful projects and programs. Today, Sarah Link, Vice President of Community Impact, is here to present the idea of partnering with the United Way to open two community schools at the Ford and the Washington. These two schools were chosen for many reasons. Foremost, both possess leadership who are excited to transform their relationships with families and community in their quest to nurture and support the academic, as well as the social-emotional success of their students. Both principals are here this evening and will speak to their why, why Ford and why Washington. However, I would be remiss in my introduction if I did not mention the desire of the Ford School to return to its roots of being a community school. In all transparency, I called Dr. Crane to share this information, and I am sure, to no one's surprise, she is here this evening. One of the things I want to note here, Dr. Crane is considered a national leader in the community school movement, and dedicated most of her career to nurturing this vision at the Highlands School. Dr. Crane, we thank you so much for all your work and your impact, and I know how much you're loved up in the Highlands at the Ford School, and I do know the extent of your work. Thank you so much.
Can I say something?
Yes, you may, Dr. Crane.
I have been dying to come and tell how, what a big surprise it was when I got the telephone call from Kim Powers saying that we were going to reopen the community school. The Highlands area is ecstatic over it. All the services that were there will be back. And I'll tell you, I was walking down Union Street, and who stopped me? One of the seniors, who used to be part of the community school. We had a senior lunch program. They used to come and have lunch in the garden. And then when, just a quick story, and then when they stopped the garden because of, it was getting cold and everything, so we stopped it, I got a call from the senior center saying, "Dr. Crane, the seniors are really heartbroken. What are they going to do? They can't come and, you know, use the garden and have lunch." And I said, "No problem, we're going to call it Lunch Bunch. They can come and have lunch with the kids." The kids that they developed a relationship with, very important. So when they heard that we're coming back, we're going to have the seniors, and just so many people are so excited about you bringing back the community school, so many different services, and the crime watch people, they're all ready to go. Thank you very much. The school committee and everybody who had input. And I'm congratulating you on the superintendent, Avarice. Basically, I was very familiar with your work in Miami. I was down in Broward County.
Oh, okay.
For two years with Dr. Map from Harvard.
I spoke to her today.
I am so excited you're coming here because I know, you know, you get it.
And you'd be happy to know. Thank you so much for sharing that. And she is excited to work with us in a partnership. And we will have a kickoff event, actually, in June with Dr. Map, yes.
Oh, she's.
Yes, she's fabulous.
The best.
Thank you very much. I'm all excited. Can't talk anymore.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Crane.
Sarah, I'll turn the presentation over to you.
Great. Thank you, everyone. And Dr. Crane, it is an honor to be in your presence. I've heard about you for decades. And it's the first time I get to be in the same room as you. So I feel like a little celebrity crush going on. Thank you all for making space for us tonight. We could not be more excited to be here to talk a little bit about community school strategy that we're hoping to relaunch here in Lynn, fill you in a little bit about how the work has evolved over the last few years in the field, and put together a little bit of a plan to show you and get your input on what we want to learn over the next few years. So for those of you who do not know about United Way, hopefully you know a little bit about us, but want to give you a little bit of context for what brings me here today on behalf of United Way. So probably what you all know about United Way is that we invest significant resources in our nonprofit friends and the Lynn community every single year. We partner with eight organizations in particular who receive over $350,000 a year from us. And we do a lot of other work with an additional, probably about a dozen nonprofits. In addition to that general operating support, to really sustain the general operating support of these really critical organizations who provide such critical services to the community, we also, especially over the last few years and the pandemic, have really partnered with other foundations and state agencies to bring swift nimble resources into the community through the Lynn Community Care Fund, which hopefully you all had heard about, and a couple of efforts around summer programs and after-school programs. We've brought in an additional $3 million of pandemic relief support, both to nonprofit organizations and to citizens directly. So really being able to react quickly to get resources where they're needing is something that we really pride ourselves on. There are no shortages of really wonderful community coalitions here in Lynn. We are honored to be parts of them. Various efforts around education, early childhood, housing, and all of those sorts, all those issues that are really important to us, too. And finally, we've got a longstanding partnership with the leadership in Lynn Public Schools to really try to bring together resources to tackle really entrenched issues that no single organization can really address. So we've had many, many years-long partnership. One, two examples that we're particularly proud of is an effort called the Rise Program, more fondly known as the SEEMER Program here in Lynn, where we've partnered with L-Hand and LPS to bring really important case management resources to families experiencing housing instability and homelessness, to support the students and their families. And then we have an Miracor program that has been working in Lynn for almost 10 years across the middle schools and high schools and our community partners to bring Miracor fellows into the district to really support those multilingual learners. We've definitely had some recruitment challenges over the last few years, so we haven't had as many folks serving, but have really valued that partnership to make sure that we're helping to address some of the key issues in schools and across the community. So a little bit about United Way. We are really excited about a community school strategy within the district. This is a part of a big national movement. Dr. Crane has been in it for a long time. And the field has really evolved over the last decade or so. We're joining other local efforts here in eastern Massachusetts. Lowell will be launching a community schools effort over the next couple of years. And Boston is also involved in a community school movement. So it's exciting to be part of this. I'm just going to read real quick what a community school strategy is for folks who are new to this terminology. So a community school strategy transforms school into a place where educators, local community members, families, and students work together to strengthen conditions for student learning and healthy development. As partners, they organize in and out of school resources, supports, and opportunities so that young people thrive. So lots and lots of themes throughout this meeting so far, where hopefully you're seeing a lot of alignment already with a community school strategy. We have a brand-new visual here. There are four or five national entities that really provide a lot of support to a community schools movement in communities. And this is a relatively new visual to really describe how a community school strategy works. The most important thing is the why. Why we do this work, which is to really center students and ensuring that students flourish in thriving school communities. And the next circle, it's who drives this work. So really partnerships with school staff and coordinators, community school directors, with young people and families, and with community partners, really continuing to center that student experience. The next is creating a set of conditions. So without trusting relationships, a shared vision, inclusive decision-making, and actionable data, none of this can happen. Bringing in that data again. The key practices of a community school strategy. So collaborative leadership, shared power and voice, really meaning with parents and families in particular, really supporting expanded and enriched learning opportunities. So how do we extend those learning opportunities beyond the classroom? Bringing in those community partners in and out of school to make sure that school learning is extended. A rigorous, community-connected classroom instruction, culture of belonging, safety, and care, integrated students of support, lots of movement locally and nationally around multi-tiered systems of support for students. This is very much aligned to that movement, really making sure that students are centered, and that we have a variety of ways of really engaging all of the educators and community partners in meeting the needs of students and families. And then finally, powerful student and family engagement. So those are our critical pillars, the pieces of a community school strategy. And last but not least, we need that structure to really wrap our arms around and be the container for how we hold on to that vision for student-centered learning. So shared governance structures, continuous improvements, really looking at that data. What's it telling us? How do we need to make adjustments? Professional learning opportunities across educators, across the community, across families, strategic partnerships, and having sustainable resources. So that's really the way that we really frame out the community school structure. Here's what we know. There are 30 years of research on the potential of community schools. Most recently, our friends from Children's Aid Society in New York City, which is one of the largest community schools efforts in the country, has a 2020 study here that showed that kids in community schools, students rather, miss fewer days of school, have fewer disciplinary incidents, have improved math scores, and are more likely to graduate on time. And a few years after that, there was a deeper analysis of the data and showed more specific outcomes for students. 1% to 2% higher attendance, 7% to 8% lower chronic absenteeism, some significant gains in ELA scores, almost one standard deviation for ELA, and higher scores in math on statewide assessments as well. The thing that we want to really point out here is, all of the research shows it takes at least three years of implementation to really start to see those long-term results. We know there are immediate results in terms of culture, shared leadership, vision, you know, family engagement. But to really get at those academic achievements, want to be very clear that we expect it to take a little bit of time to really build those systems in. We have, as we've been planning, we really see four really important pieces of the implementation of a community school strategy. We will be hiring a community school director in each of the buildings to really work hand-in-hand with the principals, be a part of that school leadership team, to really implement the community school plan, to leverage data and manage all of the partnerships, to really be that glue that really holds everyone together to achieve our goals. We will rely on comprehensive assessment of needs and assets. So looking at a data collection method, really looking at engaging families and students. What are their needs in the building? How do we really make sure that we're mapping all of the resources? How do we really understand the needs and opportunities and assets of the school community? And then finally, we'll have site-based teams and a community-wide team. So again, really leveraging the atmosphere of leadership within each school building, and then having a cross-sector collaborative structure across the community to really support a community school strategy, too. So resources that it's going to take. United Way is really lucky to have the support of the Richard K. Lubin Foundation to fund all of this work for the immediate, near-term future. They really understand what a community school strategy is, what the potential is, and that it is a long game. We have many, many years of experience in working in school and community partnerships. And this frame and having their support is really critical in helping us learn along the way and how we're going to be successful, where we need to adapt and learn and grow. So the immediate resources, as we're thinking, as we're planning for the fall launch, we will be hiring two community school directors. We will have grants to really incentivize all of our community partners to come to the table, whether that is to help us plan, to help us engage community members, running community conversations, whether it's a stipend for participating, or summer camp scholarships, whatever those families need, and whatever the partners can provide, we'll have funding for that. We will have evaluation supports. Over the first couple of years, we'll really be focused in on process and design before we move into impact evaluation. Again, bringing out that data plan and really thinking, tonight's conversation's been really helpful to understand how the district is approaching data collection and data usage. So we see a lot of opportunities to really integrate and partner with all of the teams there. And then finally, lots of, I shouldn't say lots of, some funding to really support shared professional development, having emergency funds for when things happen and we need to support a family in paying a bill, or we need to have an emergency community meeting, or we need to support something happening. We'll have some flexible dollars for that, and then some funding also for supplies and materials. And in addition to that, through United Way, you'll have me and colleagues here to guide the process along the way and to engage all of the partners and community. We do intend on raising additional dollars to really help bring this strategy to scale both in Lynn and around the region as well. And really think about a policy and advocacy agenda to make sure that at the core, schools and school districts are funded to really be able to meet the needs of kids and families. So we hope to see a lot, we're seeing a lot of really innovative strategies in other states across the country, and look forward to sharing some of that as well. The price tag, we're not exactly sure. We're not in implementation mode. Our current estimations, based on budgets we have dreamed up and started to implement, are about $400,000 per school per year. That includes the personnel costs. It includes United Way's support. It includes all the funding in these buckets over here on the left. Next up, I want to have my friends, Anthony and Amy, talk a little bit about why they are excited about this pilot. We are calling it a pilot, and I want to say a quick word about why we're calling it a pilot. This is not a pilot in the sense we're going to come in for a couple of years, see if this works, and go on and do something else. We really want to invest for the long haul, both time, relationships, talent, and really make sure that this is an effort that can stay really deeply embedded throughout the district. In some ways, to honor Dr. Crane, we know what an impact it had on the community. It's amazing to hear everyone talk so fondly and give the standing ovation. And this is about building that culture of really supporting students and families. So the pilot language is because our intention is to test things, to learn, to reflect, to grow, to change, but is in no means to have a specific time limit to it. So I will stop rambling and turn it over to my friends to say a few words.
So clearly, I will never fill the shoes of Dr. Crane. And what's unique is that Dr. Crane did this all on her own many, many years ago. And I actually met her first when I was working at the Cook Street Park as a park counselor. And she went down every day and made sure that all the students came up and had their lunch, you know, on their break. So the difference here is that I will have an incredible support system. We know that there's a need for this at the Ford School. We know that it was successful. So I feel like everything that the United Way is able to provide for us, you know, I've said that the families are ready. They're waiting. They want this. And so we are just going to meet every need that they have. We're going to meet every need that their children have so that we can increase student achievement and just welcome those families into the building because it is a true partnership. So I thank you in advance for this opportunity. And I'm in good company here with Mr. Frye.
Listen, I can't hold it to that or any of that. I will speak about, you know, the impact when Kim proposed this and came and said, I have an idea. These are some of the things we can do. I just, I was so excited because when you go to a school like Washington or Ford and you're in a neighborhood, you start to see things, right, that come up that need assistance. They need to be addressed. There's no time to do this. And so you do what Dr. Crane did. You do what Mr. Frye has done with the partnership of the district. Stop &amp; Shop is a partner for us. We have a food pantry. We feed, you know, 200 families a month, every month, through COVID, through all of that, right? Those partnerships are great. They start with a lot of support. Now, Mr. Frye goes and gets the food by self. Why? Because the parents need it. They're looking for it. The kids need it. The parents need it. We do jackets, right? We do with Tina, and we give our kids, we give them what they need. And so for us, it was Lynn Community Health. Bring them in because we're less absentee. Give kids service they need. Food pantry. Now, we're scrapping, piecing together. We have campfire, right? Our parents, we need care. So campfire, we partner. We're doing the work. This gives us a vehicle to embrace the work and elevate. And what Amy said, it's about student achievement. We know that all of these things together, coupled with an environment that is rich for education, learning, growth, for our staff, for our kids, for everybody in our community, like, that's the power of the work. That's the Dr. Crane stuff, right? And so we are just so blessed and so thankful to have, you know, the timing to line up, to be able to do this work. When we're doing it, you know, on our own, now we'll have some support. And student achievement is the goal of all of this. So thank you.
We have one more slide before we're gonna, two more slides before we're gonna open up for questions. So we have a series of questions that we will be exploring over these next few years, over what we hope to learn through this pilot. So really, again, in service of increasing student academic achievement, this pilot will define the following about our strategy. So we really want to dig deep on family engagement, student voice, student belonging. What does it take to really fully embed and sustain a strategy? How do we bring together schools and community partners to holistically support families and students? These are the key things that we'll be looking for in these first few years as we look to adjust and learn and plan for expansion. Our next steps, we have teams from the two schools and our community partners going to a national conference in Philadelphia in early June. In between now and then, we'll be looking to finalize our job descriptions and hopefully hire some incredible community school directors. We'll begin planning for the community needs assessments and create each individual school's community school strategy. One important piece that I hadn't talked about is, there is no single model for a community school strategy. We have these frameworks. We have these tools. But every single community school looks a little different, and that is intentional so that the partnerships and the responses can really be tailored to the individual school community. So there's, you know, it's why I'm kind of in those buckets of things that we'll be providing, was intentionally vague because we really want to be able to really tailor the work to each individual school and community. So now is your turn. We're curious to hear, what are you thinking about? What questions do you have for us? What do you hope to learn from this pilot?
Mr. Dugan, Mr. Peña.
So, thank you for that presentation. I'm so excited for this. I think this is going to be a great addition to the LPS and the Lynn Public Schools family. I know that in the Highlands community especially, this is going to be a really, really good use of the resources we have. So, thank you. You know, like they say, it takes a village. And congratulations, Mr. Nerek, by the way. This is, yeah, it's great for you, and to be taking this on right away shows, you know, a lot of initiative on your behalf, so thank you. My, just a quick question, it's kind of a logistic thing. The community directors, you said you're still trying to create the job descriptions. Will Mrs. Nerek be part of the process there? Just, you know, she'll be working closely with that person? You know, her and her staff be part of that as well?
Yes, absolutely. We reviewed a draft job description yesterday and really talked through what the position is responsible for, what the position is not responsible for, and really want to make sure that we're really grounding it in the visions of the principals, the visions of Kim, and how are we making sure that this person is a really critical piece of the school leadership team? So, I don't know if you guys want to add anything to that?
Great, thank you. That was all I needed.
It will be a Lynn Public Schools position, too. It's not a United Way position. It will be a Lynn employee. Yeah.
Well.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Really appreciate it. I'm a fan of Dr. Claire Crane. Hi, Dr. Crane. I visit her many times, and my daughter attended the school up there. And I'm just so excited of all the opportunities and the things that can come out, this, you know, like, you know, family support and parent engagement. Also, I get a lot of questions, you know, I get asked a lot by stakeholders, do, do they have any adult education on, on learning how to, you know, English, you know, for adults and families? Like, I could see all that happening over there. I get, I also get a lot of feedback from stakeholders, and, and I just want to thank you, Mr. Fry. You know, I talk to a lot of parents, and you're very visible, and a lot of them have assist, you know, assist ability to you, and you have a very open line of communication, and I think that's important, especially with a community school and all the ideas and things you do with the community. And I'm pretty sure Ms. Nerek understands, we, we received a letter, you know, from, from members of the community, and they are very, you know, very excited to have Ms. Nerek up there and to all embrace, and this is so exciting, you know. I mean, coming from a, I, I grew up, you know, you know, we didn't have too much, you know, Mr. Castellano talk about food insecurities and stuff, and I could just see how addressing all these things, and, and, and things are differently, you know. Different neighborhoods have, have different needs and stuff, and I'm just, you know, I'm touched by this, and, and, and like, you, you put it nicely, like, all these ideas are just embracing, a, a big support of this, you know, idea, this work that you're already doing, and it just complements what, what you have, have going. Thank you.
Member Paul, and Member Kaylee.
I'm so excited that it's going to be a plan and it's going to be out in the open. Instead of what Dr. Crane did, she used to sneak around everybody's back and, you know, start some new part of her community school and then get, I, I was back on the school committee way back then, and she'd get in more trouble. We would try to say that we already, we knew about that, or didn't we vote for that already? You know, so it was a lot of trouble that she caused for us, but.
At the benefit of her, her families.
At the benefit of the families. I mean, everybody on the Hill just adored her. They didn't even have to be in the school. They were just people who lived there and know what a difference they saw it happen, so.
Can I just tell one quick story?
You want to defend yourself, right, of all your sins?
This is a quick story. And I know he doesn't mind me. He's, he was a student at Ford School. He's a special needs student, and he was supposed to go to a special needs school, but the uncle said he wanted him to come to Ford School. So, I said, "Okay." So, he went through Ford School and with support and help. He's six foot five, and he's just a wonderful kid, brilliant in technology. So, he basically went through Ford School, then he went to the middle school and the high school, and then his uncle said to me, "Dr. Crane, what are we going to do with Nick?" His father had passed away, and I said, "We can send him to the dorm at Salem State, and he can start getting his bachelor's degree." Because if you get the degree, you can get Ford at Salem State. So, he went to Salem State, he got his bachelor's degree, and then he said, "Dr. Crane," he got offered a very good job in Boston, so he took it for the technology. And I said, "Stay at Salem so you can have a place to live. You can use the dorm." So, we went, he stayed at Salem, he got his master's degree. And then, he just graduated this past June with an MBA, a master's. His company that he worked for in Boston has about 20 and 30 lawyers. They adore him because technology, he can do anything. So, he said, "Do you, Dr. Crane?" Now, I said, "Well, I, I still need a place to live." I said, "You know..."
I know a lady.
So, I said, "You know what? UMass has a doctoral program." He's very bright. You need to live someplace because there's transportation back and forth to Boston with the T is two hours going, two hours going back, and it's wearing him down. So, I said, "I have a friend there. She's working at Ford. We'll go, you know, get you and see if they can take you in." He's now going to get his doctorate.
Fabulous, great story.
That shows you what you can do with kids, and we're so proud of him. The last thing was kind of shaky because he said, "I can't stay in the dorm while he tries to get, you know, get into UMass." And I said, "We'll put you in the Washington Square Residence down here. I'm on the board."
See what I mean?
Still making moves, right? Still making moves.
But just to finish this conversation, the attitude at Ford was, we never said no. I said, "Never said no." They say, "How can we do it?" And they know whatever idea they had, they could come, and if they had a solution for it, we did it. And like an example of little kids who, the vision, the scores on the test were not good, and the reading scores were low. I said, "You know, we have to do these little guys that just teach first grade. They can't see." But you hear what we did? They can't see. And I had a group of doctors, eye doctors, the coalition, and I said, "Can you help us out? The kids, they need glasses, they, they lose them." They were telling me, "Check your back." So, they said, "No problem, Dr. Crane." We had the doctors come in, they took the tests and went over all. Every student at Ford School, when they came in and got fitted, if you saw a crowd up at the North Shore Shopping Center, it was my class. Studying while they got fitted for glasses. Every kid at Ford School got two pairs of glasses, one for home and one for the school, and you saw our scores. That's all I have to say.
Member Kaylee, and then Member Castellanos.
First of all, you have big shoes to fill. You can see it, right? I'm so happy that you're going to be able to allow these two schools to have community school because those communities need it desperately. And I know we've been talking about Dr. Crane, and we've talked about Ford, but I'm going to like focus on this. This young man right here, when he decided to go into teaching, he was working at puddle jumpers. Do you remember puddle jumpers? And my nephew Sean had you in class, and you were like God. But I see and I know that those students over there at Washington feel the same way about you, and just hearing how you're helping that community touches my heart. You're getting them food, and that's what a community school is all about, and you both are like incredible, just your, just your rapture there from all those recommendations from the whole community. It was a beautiful thing to witness, and I am so happy that you are going to help them to be successful, and it will be successful. And our test scores will go up, and our children will be happy, and everybody will be learning, and that's what we want in public schools. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Member Castellanos.
First off, I want to congratulate you all for this, these two opportunities that we're going to be able to experience. These, these type of experiences are vital, right? We, we seek student achievement in a district where we, you know, are trying to serve the underdog, and I think community schools provide opportunities, right? Life-changing trajectories, you know, coming from a first-generation low-income background, you know, there's so much social capital that I could see over here that could really change a kid's life. I want to thank the United Way folks for always stepping up for Lynn. We appreciate that, and I've worked with the United Way for many years now, on the generosity and strategic vision that you guys have always honed in on us as, as a partner has been inspiring. I want to also highlight the, the fact that, you know, when you presented the why, I think that's so important. I think our why really drives a lot of what we're going to be doing in the times of diversity, especially as we grow through this process to growing pains, and, and it's going to keep us mentally tough to endure those tough days when we have to, you know, when we, it, it's all, it's all good now until, you know, when, when it's time to be a community school, right? And that's the piece where I look forward to hearing all the inspiring stories that you're going to pull, all the success stories, right, that we're going to pull from those, those students, families, and it's going to be a village because it does take a village, and I'd be remiss if I don't talk about Dr. Crane because I think Dr. Crane's, the Highlands really, really appreciate the groundwork that was laid. Now, you guys have an opportunity to, to fulfill more legacy and to really make an impact, and that's very important. So, I want to say thank you and congratulate you all.
No pressure.
Don't worry.
Thank you so much. This is a thrilling update, such an exciting launch, and as you can tell, there is a ton of excitement about this legacy and this work, so thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, next items are field trip requests. The first one's a classical high school softball team in Mashpee, April 1st and 2nd. What's the recommendation of the superintendent?
I so request and ask for an approval.
Roll the school committee?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Post? Nice to have it. Pickering Middle School, grade eight, to Canterbury Lake in San Antonio, Hampshire on June 12th.
And I don't think anyone doesn't like Canterbury Lake. I still have vivid memories of sixth grade 13 times on their roller coaster, so I would request you to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Post? Nice to have it. LVTI Skills USA, the State Conference in Marlboro, April 27th to 29th.
I think you know what my answer's going to be there. This program is amazing, and I'm sure we're going to hear great things from this.
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Post? Nice to have it. A request, good luck, LVTI, and we, we will very much be looking forward to the results there as we do every year. The request to accept a donation of $2,000 from Kings Lynn Residence Council to Breed Middle School.
I highly recommend.
So moved.
So moved with the thank you.
Motion.
Second.
And then a question.
Yeah, I have a question. Is that restricted? I just want to know what the, so it's, it's kind of a broad donation, is it something that?
It does say in the letter with something new such as books, computer, really anything. They're, they're pretty much leaving it up to the school on what they want to use it for.
Thank you.
It's very generous.
Member Kaylee.
I have a question on the field trip for the classical softball team to Mashpee High. I, I just need this for my own mind. On transportation, it says parent drivers. I, I don't, can you explain that?
I assume it is that they're carpooling. It's, they're going, it looks like they're going to do like, almost like a mini tournament kind of scenario. So, typically, just as someone who was a parent of athletes, when you do these kind of trips, a lot of times the parents will carpool. And I would imagine that the coach would have sign, you know, permission slips from parents.
And how many people are going?
The team, I don't know the exact number, but I mean, a team, a softball team, you're looking at 20 kids on a softball team?
Okay, all right. I was just looking for numbers. Usually you have a number, but that's okay. All right, that was my question.
Oh, actually, it shows. Number of pupils by grade, there are 12, oh no, they're just saying grade 12. I can find out for you and update you on that. I can get clarification if you want.
Thank you, and I definitely would say go, so I just need those numbers.
We have a motion on the table that's been seconded on the Kings Lynn donation. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gayley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Next item is a update on Pickering and requests around advocacy, so I wanted to provide an update as to where we are to the, to the full committee with, along with my colleagues who are serving on the School Building Committee, Member Castellanos and Member Gayley, as well as members of the administration. So, the, 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 one of the main things I want to highlight in this update is the date, April 10th, there is going to be a public forum. The final site selection as part of the program design is being submitted at the end of April, and we selected, the School Building Committee selected a preferred site in December, and throughout the diligence into the preferred site has sort of reconfigured that, what was originally Magnolia Field, to a set of really three options that the, the School Building Committee is considering. The option around rehab of the school or expansion of the school must be considered under the MSBA, but it's not, essentially not a viable option. So, those three reconfigurations of, of the preferred site are going to be presented at the public forum, and the, the project team has already made a recommendation for one of those on, on sort of situating the school on where the fields are assisted in the parking lot and using Magnolia for parking in fields. And that is going to be presented at a forum on April 10th, and the School Building Committee is, is meeting immediately following that. And so, we will be sharing out information about that event, and, and I know some of the members are, are going to be firing the neighborhood, which we very much appreciate to encourage attendance and promote transparency, and we'll be encouraging people to submit questions in advance so that we can be prepared for, for questions and also be ready for the committee to take a vote at that, at that meeting. So, obviously, this is not the forum to get into the, the detail on the, the site or the design, but of course, always, my team and I are always available to answer any questions. But we are going to ask for your support and advocacy around the funding for Pickering Middle School. As I have communicated to the School Building Committee, and as you saw, hopefully in the, in the draft letter that we circulated, we, we have a, a potential issue with respect to the funding. We, the city had originally planned for a school in the neighborhood of $110 to $130 million. That number jumped up in the last, you know, couple of years to about $130 and $150, and then it jumped again to well over $150. And as a result of those escalations, the city is at a point where we're, we're going to need additional state support to be able to afford the project. And a, a big driver of that is the cap on the per-square-foot reimbursement rates from the MSBA. So, essentially, what's happened is construction costs are up, but the reimbursement has not kept pace with that. So, as you know, we, under the statute on the SBA, they have a formula that... So as you know, we, under the statute on the SBA, they have a formula that, based on community's income, community wealth, they have a percentage of the reimbursement. We're at the top, we're at 80%, as you might imagine. As you all know, that doesn't mean we get 80%, right? And that was true, that's always been true, because there's certain costs that aren't allowable, and there's always this gap between the actual market and the rates on paper. For the Marshall, we were in the neighborhood of 60-something percent. And had that continued to be the case, we would not have, we would not be having this conversation. As a result, in the increase in the actual costs and the lack of continued increase in the reimbursement rates, we're looking at an effective reimbursement rate of something around 45%. So in other words, the city would need to be paying for a majority of the costs. And so we have, you know, raised this issue with the school building committee, raised this issue with our state delegation. The state delegation has been really tremendous in helping us think through various options and advocating. We've reached out to not only the MSBA and the treasurer, but also other stakeholders, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, who as you know are not funding school construction, but are sort of, have a big interest in this, of course, as well as the Executive Office of Education, where our former colleague is. The teachers' union has been a great partner, and the legislature has been putting us in touch with their colleagues as well. We've also been communicating with other communities who are experiencing the same issue, as you, obviously, this is not just a Lynn issue. And so there's a lot of projects that have been caught in this kind of inflationary trap, and so we're actively working at talking to other communities who also face this to identify sort of ideas and solutions that'll help. And the goal with this letter is to, you know, first make sure you all are aware of the situation, but also to sort of present to the various stakeholders this idea that, you know, we, there's a really tremendous need here, and we're all aligned that, you know, steps need to be taken to make this continue to move forward. So we've shared a version of this with the city council, and they're gonna consider a similar step and would appreciate your support to sign on to this letter. Member Gailey.
As the Chair of the Building and Grounds Committee, I complimented the mayor the other night. I gave him a quick call because of the transparency on the committee and the due diligence that we work together, and everybody on that committee has a voice and they're listened to. And we were all very disappointed with the percentage, because it's just so unfair to our Lynn community to be in the middle of a project and have them drop like a hammer on us. But the mayor, he came up with a plan, and we're working on that plan. We're working on talking to the legislators. We're working on this letter. We're working on getting Sheila ready, because we're gonna have to go do some protesting and get some more money into our city that we deserve. Because I believe you said to me, Mr. Mayor, that the formula again, sort of like our...
Yeah.
... opportunity, our formula is off. This one might be off. But I just have to say that I want everybody out there that's interested in this building to show up on April 10th. If you want to, Dr. Alvarez suggested that we have questions prior to it, and we'll have the answers for you. And we are not giving up on this project. We are not. This is gonna go through, and we are going to have a new Pickering. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Member Gailey. Member Magnolia, and Member Castellanos.
I just want to say that I am in full support, 100% of the letter, and I think it's really important that whenever it comes to any kind of school building issues, and I think this came up with what happened with how many students originally Marshall was going to be built for, and then the school committee did a type of advocacy that they upped that number, I think it's really important for the school committee not to sort of sit passively by while this is happening for both the residents of Lynn, but also, you know, as someone whose daughter is going to miss the new Pickering by maybe a year if it's on schedule. So I have no stake in that game specifically, but I still want to see it built for the exact same reasons as Member Gailey mentioned, for all of the students who are going to come after her, that whatever we can do to support this effort, if that means groups of us going to Beacon Hill or camping out at Ashburton Place, I think we would be happy to do that. I just, I can't emphasize enough that advocacy is essential. We can't just let it happen.
Thank you, thank you. Member Castellanos.
Yeah, I want to move forward with the support of this letter.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Thank you all so much. I think it really means a lot to the effort to have all your support and advocacy, so I really appreciate it, and we will continue to keep everyone posted. And, you know, there's a lot of folks that are working on this, and I also will say that I know that the folks that are gonna receive this letter are, understand the issue and want to build schools. So we are really excited to have an opportunity to continue to engage in dialogue, and, you know, I think it's, I think it's important for the taxpayers to know that we are bringing an incredible amount of discipline to this process. We're working with a project team and an architect that are very experienced in this, that built the Marshall Middle School ahead of schedule and under budget, and have really guided us through this process in a way that we're really confident that we're being as disciplined as we can in getting the building we need for our students, but doing it responsibly. And, you know, we're not the only community that's been caught in the inflationary trap, and so we're really hoping that there's a way to address that, so thank you. All right. Any votes taken in the Building and Grounds Subcommittee? Member Gailey.
A motion was made to explore the food project and go forward with next steps' possibilities.
Any second?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
No, yes, excuse me. Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
I just want to say no once.
Any votes taken in the Policy Subcommittee?
No. That's for the... I jumped the gun, no, no, there was nothing there.
Okay, great, thank you. Any votes taken in the Personnel Subcommittee?
Yes, we moved two job postings forward. First one being the Administrator of Special Education with Corrections on the, under essential duties and responsibilities to be Executive Director of MLE. And that's the first one.
All right, any second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Okay, and the second one is Executive Director of Data Assessment and Accountability with adding under qualifications, under successful teaching experience preferred.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Do a motion to amend the agenda to move the executive session to the end.
So moved.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Post. Nice to have it.
Okay, my quote for this meeting, "And one has to understand that braveness is not the absence of fear, but rather the strength to keep on going forward despite the fear", by Paulo Coelho. "This week's tragic event continues to make our hearts ache with sadness. It is hard to comprehend why we keep experiencing situations like this. Like you, I'm deeply shocked and saddened by the events that occurred at the Covenant School in Nashville, Tennessee. While I know our focus is on supporting our students, I also took time to check in on our staff. When a violent act like this occurs in a school setting, it can be difficult to process for those of us who serve in education on a daily basis. Please know that we are here to help our staff and, of course, our students. It is times like these that it's important that we support each other and take some time to engage in self-care. I'm sure that you will all join me in keeping the Nashville community in our thoughts at this time, and thank you all. Thank you, thank you to all of our staff for all that they do for our students and families. Along with the beginning of the spring season, planning for the following year intensifies in the month of March. We are always thinking about the next step in our, and our district's strategic plan is used to guide our thinking. The spring months also involve a broad effort to recruit and onboard staff for new and vacated positions, the first step always being our internal transfers through our bidding and bumping process. We have completed our first two rounds of postings and have worked closely in collaboration with the Lynn Teachers Union to have this process go as smoothly as possible. Another important aspect of retaining our staff is the collecting of feedback from them about their well-being and emotional health. Pre-COVID, we have done school-based staff surveys in order for our school leaders and our district administration to hear where we have gaps and where we need to provide additional support and guidance. District administration is looking into returning to this practice. We are beginning conversations in partnership with the union on the best tool to use to collect this information. More to come on this in the future, in future meetings. As you may recall, during the negotiations with Local 1736, we agreed to conduct a classification and compensation study to accurately identify job roles and responsibilities. This is mainly to truly professionalize our clerical staff and provide a clear picture of the important work that they do. This study began with the support of an organization, Gov HR. These staff members, or our staff members, are in the process of completing job surveys and interviews to collect all the information needed to take the next step. We're excited to see the results of this study, and as more information becomes available, it will be shared with you. Other positive news to share, Lynn English and Lynn Classical are two of 26 schools that are being recognized at the Massachusetts State House on April 5th as part of the Advanced Placement Day. They will be awarded the AP Access Award for their commitment to expanding access to AP courses at their schools. Lynn English and Lynn Classical also had student winners and some honorable mentions for the Montserrat College of Art Congressional High School Art Competition and Show. Each winner was presented with a citation from Congressman Molten. Dejeanay Kelly from Lynn Classical High School won second prize. Christina Tron from Lynn English won Best of School Award, and Amy Matul, Amica Shackelwood from Lynn Classical, and Lydia Robles from Lynn English High School, all won honorable mentions. A special thank you to their teachers, Erin Sutton, Leah Warren, Kristen Peritas, and Martha Brown, who worked tirelessly to expose their students to every artistic technique and medium. The Department of Education has shared with us that we received awards for two grants, Highly Qualified Instructional Material Implementation Grant for our implementation of illustrative math, I always have to say that slowly, which was submitted by Julie Ward, Assistant Director of Mathematics. The award was $365,938, which was the largest amount awarded, and Civics Project Showcase Grant submitted by Kristen Tobacco, who is the Assistant Director of History, with the maximum award of $5,000. We continue to work hard to keep our district and schools moving forward in recovering the learning loss and accelerating our students' learning.
Thank you, thank you. It's great news. Looking for a motion for executive session, if you could read out the actual, what it says there.
I make a motion to request for executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining relative to Lynn Teachers Union. The discussion of these matters, which involves strategy in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on and compromise the bargaining position of the public body.
And then for the minutes, too?
Second.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, and also request for executive session to approve executive session minutes for the January 26, 2023, and February 9, 2023 meetings.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola? Absent. Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. So I guess we'll do the minutes first. There's a motion to approve the executive session minutes for January 26 and February 9, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. And there was a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement relative to the caseload with the Lynn Teachers Union.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
To adjourn.